Okay, we'll get started. Good morning, everyone. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council. And we're conducting our work session via conference today. This meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live, and will be available later for Channel 99 and AT&amp;T U-verse and the city's YouTube. As a reminder to everyone, this work session gives the council an opportunity to review items on today's agenda, as well as any ordinances and resolutions that have been routed to the council consideration. And these meetings are informal, and no official action is taken. So if we look at our official agenda for today, we have item number 8A. This is regarding property located at 507 Cherry Street in District 5. No council action will be necessary because the nuisance has been abated by the owner. Item number nine is a public hearing and a resolution approving the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license at AJ Bravo LLC doing business as Don Baggett's, located at 1721 Rainbow Drive in District 4, and has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Item 10 is a public hearing and a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. And this is Express Motor Partnership GP doing business as Express Mark 1, located at 2511 South 11th Street, has applied for a retail beer and table wine license off premises. And item number 11 is a public hearing and a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. This is Fresh Value Gaston LLC doing business as Fresh Value, located at 2519 West Miggin Boulevard, and has applied for a retail beer and table wine license off premises only. For the public hearings, our attendees using Zoom will have an option to, on their screen, call raise hand. And anyone that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to the issuance of a liquor license will click that button at the appropriate time during the council meeting. We have item 12 is a resolution appointing members to the Gaston Cultural Arts Foundation. Are there any questions or comments from the council members concerning today's agenda?
Madam President, just real quick, just FYI, I plan to abstain from the vote on the liquor license in District 5. This entity actually, we do business with them, the brewery does. So in the interest of objectivity, I'm going to abstain from that. But obviously, I think the police chief has recommended that we disapprove that license. And I'll just say in general that I value the police chief's opinion. And I'll leave it at that. And I'm going to sit this vote out.
Okay.
Is this not the Titan Mart right here we're talking about?
Um, I, let me, yes, the owners involved are also involved in the Titan Mart. I'm not sure if it's actually a change of ownership at the Titan Mart, or if it's another venture. What's the address on it again?
2511. I was thinking this is in District 6. I could be wrong. Unless this is a jet pep, unless they purchased a jet pep down there.
Well, that's what I was thinking it was, Johnny. That's what I was, that's where I thought it was, was on the South 11th there, the jet pep. But these individuals are also involved with the Gaston, the Titan Mart over here on 6th Street in Walnut. And they can...
Okay, yeah, Ms. Iver just pulled it up for us. It's probably, it's right past Gaston City High School. Obviously going towards the townway. Which way is it going?
I think just past Gaston City High School going south.
Okay.
It looks like when I called you up on the GIA.
If that's going south, that's, uh, that is in your district. It's a couple of streets away from District 6, right there.
Yeah, but, I'll let you lead the charge on this one, Johnny. Like I said, I don't, I just don't want to create a conflict.
Oh, I don't have anything. I just want to make sure where it was. And I didn't know if it was the other service station or this one. You know how I always vote, I mean, yeah, so.
Sure.
Have you all checked the, have you all checked the application of what, why the chief probably disapproved? Have you all read that?
Again, I have some concerns over that. But I'll just say this, the one thing I will clarify to keep in mind when y'all are looking at those police reports, several of those incident reports, they were actually the ones reporting the crime.
Right, right.
Not the one being accused of the crime. Keep that in mind. When you see all the theft of properties and break-ins, those are when they were running the Titan Mart, and people were breaking into the Titan Mart, and they were reporting them. But they do have some personal convictions on there as well at the beginning of the...
Okay.
Yeah. Councilman Wilson, if you, if you really want to vote, it's only 18 months in jail. So I mean, I, you know, I wouldn't let that scare me.
Hey, one thing, let me bring this up, please.
All right.
Uh, another option would be to table this until we could have a public hearing. What we're doing now in Zoom is, is we're kind of being aggressive with some of our legislation. And if there's a need for a public hearing, that probably, it might need to be tabled until we could have one.
I have no objection to that either, as long as Madam President was okay with that. I think we're planning on coming back into regular session next week, right?
Yeah, just for next week, yes.
Okay. Well, then maybe we can table it until next week.
It's been advertised for a public hearing today. So we would need to re-advertise or somehow notify applicants and other interested parties.
Well, we can also, we can continue the public hearing so we wouldn't have to re-advertise.
Okay.
Uh, Lee, why would we want to do this when this gentleman that we're talking about here, is, uh, he has all kinds of businesses here in the city of Gaston. He's spent no ton of how much money in the city of Gaston, building strip malls, down to car lots, to gas stations, and so on and so on. He buys all the property he can find trying to make Gaston a better place. Give me one example why we should do this.
Or Councilman, I don't, I can't tell how y'all are going to vote. I can't read the tea leaves. My concern would be if y'all were going to vote this out, say no on this, and not give the fellow an opportunity to address some of your concerns. That was my, now, if y'all were going to vote for it, then that's a horse of a different color. But I don't know how y'all are going to vote, and I was just offering that as a suggestion. You're not voting obligation between us right now. Can you say how you're going to vote now? I mean, to not be...
No, that, you know, we just said we wouldn't take any action in this, in this meeting. So it'll just have to come out in the council meeting.
Oh, you've done it before.
Y'all can do it during discussion before you vote.
Okay. Uh, any, any other questions or comments from the council concerning this agenda? Okay, then we'll, we'll look at our pre-council agenda, our pre-council folder. We have some items in there that have been routed to the mayor and forwarded to the council. So the first item is a resolution appointing members to the zoning board of adjustment. And I guess we'll read those in regular council, or do I need to do that now? Ms. Iver?
Um, they are having a meeting, but then this person would, the new person would not really have an opportunity to be indoctrinated.
Okay, well, I just, no, I was just saying, I know we were going to read. We have appointing members to the adjustment, but we have appointing Earl Hurd to replace David Leach in District 2 for an expiring term on May 18, 2021.
Dr. Toles?
Yes.
Is, if it's possible, we could bring that up under new business and go ahead and approve if there's no objection. We have a board of adjustment meeting Thursday. They may can come and just observe if nothing else, but they could, there'd be no problem with that. We'd go ahead and do that.
Uh, is there any objections? Councilman William, I believe this is your appointee. Do you have a problem bringing it up on, in council meeting?
I do not.
All right. Would you bring it up, please? Okay, we have an appoint, appointing and reappointing members to the Gaston Commercial Development. We have, the mayor has appointed Bethina Mashburn to replace Wayne Holler on the Commercial Development Board. The mayor has appointed Chris Robinson to replace Kristi Knowles on the Commercial Development Board. Let's see, Bethina Mashburn's term expires December 31st, 2023. And Chris Robinson's term would expire December 31st, 2023.
There are also a couple of reappointments included in that as well.
Okay, I did not...
Scott Heisman and Carrie Maken.
Okay. I was reading from, let me look, I was reading from my sheet, and it just had the two on there.
That's all mine has besides...
Oh, okay, sorry about that. The resolution itself?
Yeah.
It's up to the top.
This is the first paragraph.
That's the very first paragraph. Okay, I see it now.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Uh, reappointing Mayor Scott Heisman and Carrie Maken to the Gaston Commercial Board. I'm not sure if I pronounced that last name correctly.
You got it right, Madam President. It's Maken, Maken.
Okay. Our next item is a resolution that's authorizing agreement with the Couso River Team Trail for the city to sponsor the Couso River Team Trail tournament. And this is for 2021 season to be, to hold four tournaments between March and October of 2021, including a season finale, two-day tournament at Couso Landing, and it's budgeted at $12,500.
Good morning, everyone. This is Jen. I'm here to talk about this contract.
All right.
Uh, so with this one, this is, the Couso River Team Trail every year also hosts, or help us host our Super Bass Tournament, where they come in with their trailer, their system, and they get the polygrapher to come in. And so they hit that up and really partner with us and help us with our tournament that we host in April. And then they also bring in four separate tournaments, like you were saying, where they'll have their finale, which is a two-day tournament to be hosted at Couso Landing this year.
Hi, Jen, I got a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I got one question, Ms. Toles.
Okay.
Who, how do y'all go about getting these tournaments? Does somebody help y'all get them, or how does that work?
Um, so some of these, we are contacted by the associations. Some of them, we've recruited ourself. And sometimes we partner with the Greater Gaston Tourism, who also researches and brings in some of these tournaments.
Do you have any way of getting us something about, just for my benefit, what amount of tournaments y'all get, what amount of tournaments everybody gets, and everything in the city gets, so we can, we need, I'm, for myself, I like to know who gets what and what we're concentrating on, on this kind of stuff.
Are you asking for, like, who recruits each tournament, like, the number on that?
Yes, ma'am, and that and everything in the city that we get for, anything that brings revenue into the city, like basketball, or whatever we've got here, fishing tournaments. I'd just like to see who that's reaching out and getting all this stuff for. So I would just know where we need to concentrate at, our money at, you know.
Anything that's on our property on that, we do have a hand in. Parks and Rec staff does, either me or a supervisor or rec manager. But I can get, you know, on the ones that we partner with and have all that information to you, you know, later.
Jen, the ones that we part... Go ahead, Cannon, I'm sorry.
Uh, I was just trying to get this from my own personal use and just see where we, where we're putting our money at, to where, you know, what we're, where we're getting the best benefit for our citizens of Gaston, where it's park recreation, tourism, or whatever. What's bringing, what group is bringing all this to the table? We can kind of see where all of our money's coming in from. If we need to concentrate on different stuff than we're concentrating on a little bit, or we need to just keep going like we're going and try to get more of the same thing we got.
I was going to ask you, Jen, that the people that partner with you, when there's money involved, do they share in the money? Or is it more of an in-kind or volunteerism?
Uh, there's all sorts. If we, like, on this one, we are sponsoring them to bring in the four different tournaments. And, you know, they are also aiding in us hosting the Super Bass Tournament, which this year will be our 14th annual. And this was set up in the beginning with this team trail because we do not have the waiting system for the bass, for the fish, when they come in, and then, you know, having all the records and the way to compile the winners for that, and then setting up a polygraph, somebody who polygraphs. They also host or hold the insurance for, so that we don't have to pay an excess amount for the insurance. We would actually be spending more if we didn't contract with this group for, just to host our tournament. Then plus, they bring four more, which also helps out the city because these are local fishermen, plus some from the outer areas that fish this team trail.
Okay. Okay, and our next, any other questions? Because our next item is a resolution that's authorizing agreement with the Crappy Masters Inc. company to sponsor two tournaments in the amount of $500 to be held at the Couso Landing on March 6th and May 22nd, 2021.
Yeah, this one's a new one for us this year. This is a trail that we've made contact with and talked to them. It is two different tournaments. It's 500 per tournament, so it'll be a total of 1,000. They are interested in hosting larger tournaments, but we want to see what they do with two small ones and see what next year. If they fulfill their contract this year and we feel good about it, then we'll, we'll look into a larger one next year.
Are they local?
Uh, they are out of, I have to look that one up. I'm sorry to mention that one. I don't believe they are, they're not one of our local guys. Not really 100% sure, off the top of my head. I'm trying to find where they are actually located out of.
I just thought that this was, since this was their first time, and they would knew that it was my mid and local, that's why I asked.
I believe they're from South Alabama.
Okay, all right.
Does anybody know why you don't see more crappie tournaments, considering the popularity of the fish? Jen, I mean, any idea?
Uh, well, we compete with a lot of other lakes that have some great crappie size for tournaments. We have a magnitude of crappie in our lake. It's just the size and weight of men. But we've, the last couple of years, we've brought in some new ones. We did host a large tournament about two years ago that had some small television that went along with it. They're that, and sometimes due to the amount of crappie fishermen, because they will fish from the bank. They don't jump into these tournaments as much as bass fishermen with the boat system as they have. So that's a little bit of a thing. You can fish from banking, catch a great crappie and not have to go out in your boats.
Yeah. Okay.
Our, our next...
Councilwoman Williams? Uh, if you notice, if you notice, I fish a lot. Those guys that's fishing in boats, they'll fish towards the bank. And the guys fishing on the bank, they try to throw it to the other side of the river. Look at that sometimes.
That's true.
Okay, our next item is a resolution that's authorizing agreement with the American Bass Anglers Inc. to sponsor a fishing tournament in the amount of $1,000 to be held at Gaston Couso Landing June 12th, 2021.
In the past years, we have held two tournaments with ABA, which was an open and a team. The team had, just kind of went away. And so we'll just be hosting, or we're going to host one tournament with them this year at the $1,000. And so in this one will be in June.
Any questions on that? We thank you, Ms. Wellington.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Our next resolution is authorizing a lease agreement with the Dairy Man Supply Company for property located at the Era Depot on a monthly basis at $4,000 per month. And if Mr. Hall is on, I'd like for him to give us some information on this, please.
Yes, Dr. Toles, this is Dairy Man Supply Company has requested some use of additional air depot property. So we've agreed to rent them space at one of our lots. And they have two concrete pads on our property that they're also going to be utilizing, or they're technically on it now. But we found out, and we're going to do this for a month-to-month lease agreement for $4,000 a month. And they've agreed, since they already have some equipment on there, they would pay $2,000 upfront, and this lease agreement would begin on February 1st. So they've started about mid-month. So we would like this today if there's no objection, or we could go ahead and get this lease in place.
You said month-to-month, so there's not a timeframe of like, if it's going to be 12 months, six months, 12 months? Have they indicated that to you?
No, we just, for our sake, in case we have other people interested in property for development or rental space that would need those bays on the end, we've just doing a month-to-month lease. Now, this granted, it could go on for a year or so, but it gives either party a 30-day out on it. So we've just agreed to do a month-to-month this time.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Councilman Reed, do you have a problem? Is there any objection first of this being brought up for consideration today? Councilman Reed, would you bring this up for us, please?
I'd be glad to.
All right. Our, our next item and last item is a resolution authorizing non-disturbance agreement with Gaston OPCO LLC and Bank of America NA regarding the sale of Buffalo Wild Wing Restaurant to Gaston OPCO LLC. And if the attorney is on the line, we ask for an explanation from him, please.
Yeah, a little history. You had a Mr. Story who created two LLCs. One is TWS Gaston, which owns, which built the building. And, and he, and through that entity, he leases the property from the city, which is an extremely long-term lease. And then he built the restaurant under another LLC, and the restaurant pays TWS rent. So what's happened is, is Mr. Story owns several Buffalo Wild Wings, and he has sold them to a larger franchisee. And, and so the restaurant is selling, and the new owner of the restaurant is Gaston OPCO LLC. And because of the purchase, they're borrowing money from Bank of America. And so they have a sublease between Mr. Story's land entity, TWS, and the new restaurant. And this non-disturbance agreement is protection for the bank. Said if Mr. Story defaults on our lease, then that we're going, that this agreement means that we're going to step in as Mr. Story on the sublease. And so I've looked at the sublease, and the provisions are favorable to the city, so I think we're protected.
Uh, questions? I guess I'm, what I'm trying to understand is to, what, what, bottom line, what, what does the city, how does the city benefit? I guess I'm asking that question. How does the city benefit from that?
Well, the city doesn't benefit. This is just a change of ownership, and, which they can do under the lease. And all this agreement is the bank is wanting this agreement to protect its loan. And this agreement says basically that if Mr. Story defaults on his lease with us, that we will step into Mr. Story's shoes with respect to this new owner and Bank of America. And if that happens, actually, the rent payments are more to Mr. Story than we're getting. So we would benefit if Mr. Story defaulted, which he's not going to.
Any, any other questions? Uh, this is, they're asking, they're asking for this to be brought up today. Jason, would you bring this up?
Sure, I don't mind.
Okay, all right. So we have three items to consider under new business. Are there any other questions of the council? If not, we'll take a short break, and we'll be back at 11 o'clock. Okay. Good morning. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council. We are meeting today by teleconference. Today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and also can be viewed later on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the city of Gaston YouTube. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Councilwoman Worthy?
Here.
Councilwoman Back?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson? Maybe he'll get back on momentarily here. Councilman Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed?
Here.
All right. We have a quorum present, and the meeting is open for business. Please bow for prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you blessed us with. Lord, we pray for the victims that suffered damage or injury or loss of life last night during the storms. We pray that you would be with them. We pray for the city of Fulton Dale as they try to recover. We pray for this meeting today, Lord, that you would just grant your wisdom for all the decisions that are made, that they would be made for your glory and your honor. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
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 Uh, I'd like to begin this meeting with an update from the Emergency Management Agency Director, Deborah Taylor.
Good morning. How is everyone?
Good.
All right.
Morning.
Okay. Let's see.
That was pitiful there, wasn't it?
It was. Y'all didn't sound like you ran it there.
Good morning.
There you go. Okay. Um, we've got several things to cover this morning. One thing that we want to address quickly is that tomorrow, not tomorrow, let me do it correctly. There is not a clinic at the venue on January the 28th. There is not. So don't call the venue about a clinic on January the 28th. Don't call your EMA, or even your local health department. The state public health department in Era scheduled appointments with individuals that we are not aware of, we don't know names, that there was a clinic on the 28th at the venue. There is not. There has never been one. There was never a schedule for that. We don't know how that happened. I will say that Mary Gomillion has tried very hard to get the state public health department to take that. public health department to take that off their website and off of other, um, locations where they have that posted. But, um, if you were planning on going to the venue on January the 28th for a, um, vaccine, do not. There is, there will be no one there to, to give you a vaccine. There is not a clinic on the 28th. Now, there is a clinic tomorrow for a second dose at the Etowah County Health Department for those that received their first dose on December the 29th. Those were, uh, mainly those that were critical infrastructure support, um, hospital workers, healthcare providers, some of our first responders. So that is a second dose for those who had their first dose on December 29th. And they're having it tomorrow, the 27th at the health department from 8:30 to 3:30. Um, then let's talk about what will happen at the venue on February the 4th. I need everybody to listen carefully to this too, because what we had happen at the venue last time was wrong. We did not need the citizens that lined up to line up. We had a large number that were not, um, in the group A or one, one A and one B. Um, so what I'm about to announce, this is another second dose only. Second dose only. And that is February the 4th from eight to four. And citizens will begin tomorrow, if you were in that, that group, um, getting phone calls to give you the information to line up, to check in, to get your second dose. This is the second dose for those that received their first dose on January the 7th. So those that went through the drive-through clinic at the venue on January the 7th, that means if you got a card. If you were given a card and received a vaccine, that's the only way you're getting in. Getting in line will get you nothing. It's the second dose only. Um, but phone calls should start going out tomorrow to those citizens. And they're going to be divided by alphabet and timeframe, uh, so that there won't be a large influx at one time. So, um, there's going to be some changes to how it's happening and how it's going on, but, um, so far, does anybody have any questions about all those dates and times and first dose and second dose? It's confusing to us even still.
Hey Deborah, what did you say they were going to show up with? Are they going to show up with a barcode, a card?
It's a card that they were given when they got their first dose and it had the date of the first dose on the, on it. And then there was a blank line that was never filled in as to what date they were supposed to get their second dose. Um, but they should have the card. Um, and it's about yay big. It's just small size.
So that lets us predict pretty closely to the number, the number of people that are going to actually be there.
Absolutely. Um, there should be approximately, uh, 492. But, um, there are some of those that we do not have a phone number on. So we're not going to be able to call them. So we're hoping they were watching this today. Or, um, they'll be looking at social media or family will share that with them. That was just, um, an oversight. The database we received from the health department and we do appreciate them sharing that because that gives us uh, the opportunity to make contact with those people and to give them clearer instructions when we talk to them. One thing when we call them, we are not going to ask them for information. So, um, if someone calls and says their EMA and asks for, um, their information, don't give it to them. All we're going to do is call you and give you information that you need to be able to get your second dose.
Yeah, well, one thing, you know, that, uh, that I think will be a huge benefit is that we, the police department now in, in terms of traffic control, uh, cause, cause obviously traffic, uh, was, uh, the, the, the biggest and most visible negative.
Right.
Should be able to, uh, to establish a screening spot, uh, that can very quickly filter out those people who are just showing up hoping to build their way into the process. So.
Right. And on, on behalf of the police department, last time they were so short staffed due to COVID and, um, those that were out themselves from work that they were only able to have, um, you know, about two people there, I believe. And so that did, um, handicap them. I think, um, we made the email request this morning to them, um, for traffic control. And then we also emailed the request to, um, the fire department and EMS chief for, uh, medics to wait with those after their, their vaccine for their 15 minute, um, observation. So I, we've thought of everything that we can possibly think of to try and make it easier and better. Um, you know, we never intended for that to turn out that way. And there were many obstacles and reasons as to why that happened and, and we learn from things and we grow and we do better. Um, so that's what, um, we're going to try to do this Thursday, this next Thursday for.
Hey Deborah, what's the timeframe if somebody took the first vaccination and they were supposed to come back? And get the second one and say they missed getting the second one? How long do you have to get that? So is there a timeframe?
Yes, our local health department gave us that information this past week and, um, it's six weeks. Up to six weeks is the best.
Thank you. Hey Deborah, is that six weeks from the time they got it? Or six weeks from the time they're supposed to get the second shot?
Six weeks from the first dose.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
Hey Deborah, uh, on the one that's coming up for the first round of shots, they're going to drive right through the front of the venue, the overhang there, and the nurses are going to come out to the car and give them shots. Is that correct?
That's right. They're going to be under the, um, awning on the front.
Okay, good. Good there. Thank you.
Uh huh.
You did say second round, the second, only second round shots, right?
That's the second round of those that got the first dose on January the 7th. Yes.
Do you know when there'll be another round for the first, for those that, uh, maybe haven't got the shot yet?
No, and that's, uh, actually something that public health and the EMA staff is going to meet about, um, after the clinic on the 27th. So we're going to look at how we expand and how we can go farther. Um, they're ready to give the vaccines. One thing that we need to look at, if there's anyone out there that, um, can volunteer as a retired nurse, um, or EMT, anyone that has been certified and that can give vaccines or shots. They need the assistance and the help. Um, these nurses have been working together for weeks now, about six weeks giving these out and it's every single day. Um, some days are much longer than others and they cover multiple counties. Um, they, and they get sick too. Their family gets sick too. So it's a very minimal number of, of those available to give the vaccine. So there's anyone that's, um, capable of doing that and willing to work with the health department on that, just send us an email and we'll get it to the appropriate people at the health department. Email us at ema@cityofgaston.com. Um, I don't think that we necessarily need to go over all of the numbers. Um, but one that I will mention is that we are now up to 189 deaths. Um, so we're rapidly approaching the 200 mark. Um, our positivity rate is still up, but our hospitalization numbers are down. So, I mean, that's, that's a good, um, a good thing. We just need to remember that all, when we get this vaccination, it doesn't make us, I'm going to date myself, He-Man or She-Ra. Um, that we, um, we, we can still, um, get COVID-19. We still have to take precautions to use, um, our face masks, to social distance, to hand sanitize, to wash hands, to disinfect. In one day, if you're out and about, you're probably going to be in contact closely with at least 10 people who, who have COVID-19. Everyone does not have symptoms. So just remember that. Even though we get our vaccine, it doesn't mean we're not going to get COVID-19 or that we couldn't get COVID-19. It means that it will be, um, a less drastic situation if we do. Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Deborah, percentage rate, I, I heard it on TV. I saw it on TV. If you take your first and your second shot, what's the, what's the, uh, percentage rate? The shot helps, the first and the second shot helps.
First is 75% and then it's up to between, um, 95 and 99% after your second dose. And that, of course, changes with each brand, so. All right, that was all I had.
Right, thank, thank you, Ms. Ga- Gaithlin. We appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
Great job, Deb.
We will continue with our agenda. Uh, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the city council meeting that was held on January the 19th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of January the 15th through the 21st.
So move.
Okay.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Uh, are there any proclamations? Mayor?
No ma'am.
Okay. Unfinished business. Uh, we have no council action will be necessary for the resolution for, on 507 Cherry Street in District 5. The nuisance has been abated by the owner. Uh, to our attendees using Zoom. Our next three agenda items are public hearing to consider resolutions that are approving the alcoholic beverage license. One of the option on your screen is a call raised hand. If you would like to speak in favor or in opposition to a license, then please click the button to raise your hand at the appropriate time. And you will be allowed to speak. So our, our first, uh, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing. Allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. And this is AJ Brave LLC doing business as Don Baggett, located at 729 Rainbow Drive in District 4 and has applied for a restaurant retail liquor license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
No.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
We have one no vote. Motion carries to adopt the resolution.
Our next public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Uh, Express Motor Partnership GP doing business at Express Mart, uh, located at 2511 South 11th Street in District 5. And they have applied for a retail beer and table wine license off premise only. Or is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
No.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes. I'm sorry, is this the one, is this our, the one in District 5? I just got. Yeah, I'm going to abstain from. Yeah, I'm going to abstain from this vote. I have a, I have a conflict.
Okay, uh, Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
No.
We have two no's and one extension, but we have four yeses, so the motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. This is Fresh Value Gaston LLC doing business as Fresh Value located at 2519 West Megan Boulevard in District 6. Has applied for a retail beer and table wine license off premises only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Thinking.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
No.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
No.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
We have two no's. Motion carries to approve.
Our next item is a resol- a resolution approving members to the Gaston Cultural Arts Foundation. In company disappoints Bo Arthur, Jessica Brown, and Cody Robertson for terms expiring January 1st, 2024. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
So move.
Second.
Thinking.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
No.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Uh, new businesses, are there any new businesses?
Madam President, I do have one item, uh, of new business to ask for consideration today. It is, uh, it is a resolution authorizing, uh, appointments to the, to the zoning board. Uh, ask for consideration today.
Second.
Uh, Clerk, will you take the vote?
All righty, and this vote is to consider the, uh, resolution today as an item of new business. And, uh, we'll start with Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Cannon.
Yes.
And Councilman Reed.
Yes.
We have unanimous consent to consider the resolution today.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Councilman Cannon.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Back.
Yes.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Ma- Madam President, if I may, um ju- just for, as a point of clarity, uh again, this is a uh we just approved the appointment of a new member to the uh zoning board of adjustment. Uh we had a uh, an existing member to move uh to relocate, and uh and so Mr. Earl Hurd uh has just been uh, has just been approved uh as their replacement appointee.
Okay. Do we have any other new business?
Uh yes, Madam President, um I've got one, this is um from the planning department. Um this is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Dairyman Supply Company uh for property located at the Air Depot on a month-to-month basis. Uh the rent will be four thousand dollars per month. Um and just to clarify for the general public, uh the Air Depot and the airport are not the same thing. Um the Air Depot is actually out of East Gaston over by where you used to go take your driver's test. Um this is not the actual Gaston Airport, so just wanna clarify that.
Hey Jason, was that? I'm I've got my paperwork wrong, I guess I had you on something for uh.
Yeah, Buffalo.
Wild Wings, I'm sorry.
Oh, my bad. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Jason, go ahead and do this one, I'll do Buffalo.
Okay, sounds good, so yeah, I asked for immediate consideration for um for this resolution authorizing the lease agreement with Dairyman, and I apologize, guys, I just had the wrong file pulled up.
That's second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilman Back.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Cannon.
Yes.
And Councilman Reed.
Yes.
We have unanimous consent to consider the resolution today.
Um move for adoption.
Second.
And clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Councilman Cannon.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Back.
Yes.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one, it's uh coming from the legal department. Ask for unanimous consent to consider resolution authorizing a non-disturbance agreement with Gaston OPCO LLC and Bank of America in a regarding the sale of the Buffalo Wild Wings Restaurant to Gaston OPOC LLC.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilman Back.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Cannon.
Yes.
And Councilman Reed.
Yes.
We have unanimous consent to consider the resolution today.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Councilman Cannon.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Back.
Yes.
Councilman Worthy.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Okay, I believe that's our new business. Do we have any department reports? Committee, boards? Uh we have remarks by the mayor and council mayor. Start with you.
I don't have anything, except everybody really pay attention to when you're supposed to get the shot, and I think it'll all go off a lot smoother this time.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President, um do wanna uh extend uh what's already been offered up in the way of uh of of uh just thoughts and prayers to uh the citizens and the people uh within both Fultonville and Center Point and any area that was impacted by the tornadoes uh last night, thank. Um you know, zero deaths is the ideal situation, but uh thank thank God that uh that 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 number has been minimal, uh and uh you know, we we continue to pray pray for them as they manage through uh that very difficult situation. Uh I I think, you know, we're we're very fortunate in in this area from a topography standpoint. Um and uh just just from a blessed pure purely a blessings standpoint, we just have not been impacted over the years uh by by that uh as much as some areas have, so uh so again, we'll continue to pray and support those groups where we can. On uh on next week, uh February fourth, which is Thursday of next week, uh the Alabama Provider Capacity Project through the University of Alabama's Economic Development Department will be conducting uh substance abuse uh disorder for uh two of them next week to really talk about um to really discuss and talk about what it is uh that uh that we need to do uh as a as a community to be better prepared to address uh our our issues and our needs uh relative to substance abuse. Um so anybody that's interested uh in that uh should be mindful that there will be two meetings uh next week. Uh there'll be, there'll be one meeting uh at twelve, from twelve to twelve P M to one thirty P M, uh and that meeting will be a socially distanced uh and fully masked up uh in-person meeting at the venue. Uh and with limited capacity, of course. And uh and then on February fourth uh at two, from two to three P M, there will also be uh an online uh version of the meeting via Zoom that will be conducted as well. So so again, these are uh, these are very, the 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 whole goal a- and objective uh as it relates to this is to ensure that uh that we have an open discussion about what our needs are relative to combating substance abuse and uh and the mental disorders associated with it, and also to give people an understanding of where our resources are already and uh and how we can coordinate those resources. Uh and again, these uh, these forums are being um are being facilitated by the Alabama Provider Capacity Project uh through uh the Dave Matthews Center. So uh so again, we wanna encourage people to support this where they can and uh and be a part of the conversation. Uh and uh that's all I have, man, oh, the the only other thing that I'll offer up is uh is again, I wanna I wanna offer up well wishes to Chief Carroll as he walks into retirement. Um Chief, we're gonna miss you, gonna miss having you around. You uh, you obviously, uh many people don't know uh or may not know how much of a COVID subject matter expert that the chief was for us as we were managing and as we continue to manage through this uh through this pandemic. He took uh, he took the lead in terms of a lot of the technical information uh as it relates to that and allowed us to avoid a number of landmines um uh as we were, as we were managing through it. So so again, your input, uh your experience, your expertise will definitely be missed, but we wish you well. You gotta retire at some point, so we we wish you well and we hope uh, we hope that you have a fruitful retirement uh as you move forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy? You're on mute.
Okay, thank you, I'm just gonna make an announcement about the annual point in time count, which is the homeless count will be conducted uh tomorrow to the twenty-seventh, Wednesday the twenty-seventh, and uh if you know of any homeless person or if you're homeless yourself, you can contact Renee Baker at two five six three one two five five eight nine. They'll be doing the count here in Gaston and in Anniston, and for Anniston, Calhoun County area, this is Lori Floyd. You could uh contact her at two five six two three eight six two three one. Thank you.
Councilman Back.
Thank you, Madam President, just wanna echo uh Councilman Williams' heartfelt thanks to Chief Carroll, uh twenty-one years as the fire chief in Gaston, uh done exemplary job and uh always been a steady hand uh at 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 critical times for our city and our county for two decades, so thank you, Chief Carroll, you're gonna be missed. Uh I think you said forty-three years in in uh your career, that's uh, that's a, that's a great career and uh many blessings on you as you go into this next chapter of your life, thank you. Also, just wanna mention on the Buffalo Wild Wings transaction that we approved, uh Buffalo Wild Wings isn't going anywhere. They were purchased by a larger franchisee uh holder of Buffalo Wild Wings, so I I view that as a positive. They probably have more resources, so I think we'll be enjoying Buffalo Wild Wings for uh for many years to come. So just wanted to point that out. And uh also wanna just give a continued thanks to our frontline workers, uh frontline uh healthcare workers at our hospitals, doctors' offices, clinics, uh of course, our firemen and police. Uh I've said last week and I've said many times, this is a a twenty-four hour, seven day a week uh job that they're doing for us, for the citizens of Gaston and Edgewall County, so just uh they put themselves at risk on a daily basis and and are providing much comfort to uh people that are very sick and to their loved ones who can't be there with their their sick family, and uh there's just, it's just kind of a whole new day in healthcare for our healthcare workers, so thank you all very much for what you do, uh not only for the sick people, but for the family members. And uh that we just can't, can't continue to thank those those folks enough and um appreciate Deborah Gaither and her team, they constantly uh are having to adjust because this is, although they have a a thick uh manual on pandemics and what to do, until you get into one, you don't realize that things change on a, on a hourly basis on some days, so thank you for uh the the steady hand that is provided by uh Ms. Gaither and and her team. Uh it it can't be an easy job, and I'm sure that they're, they get weary at times and and the the load gets heavy, so let's remember them in our thoughts and prayers and uh just wanna thank them for their leadership and for their uh commitment to the to the citizens here in Edgewall County. Thank you very much.
Madam President.
Yes.
Madam President, if I may, uh one message that I forgot to communicate is uh our our personnel department is really interested in letting everyone know uh that we are, we continue to actively support and and recruit for police and firemen. So uh so so please, uh if you are are out there and you're watching these meetings and you have any interest uh in becoming a police uh police officer or 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 a uh or a fireman, uh please uh be sure um please be sure to uh contact the personnel department on the second floor, City Hall, uh and uh and and apply, and all of the steps relative to the application process can be and will be uh will be explained to you when you uh, when you, when you, when you take that first step. So so again, wanna encourage um, wanna encourage people to become a part of that very distinguished group of uh first responders and 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 that better, very critical role within our community. Um Ma- Madam President, what's the gen- gender neutral term for for firemen? Is it the, is it firewoman, or what what's the gender neutral term?
Fireperson.
There you go. And if you wanna be a fireperson, definitely apply on the second floor at uh at City Hall.
Madam President, one more, uh if uh Councilman Williams is through, I I think it would be good to to point out just to make sure every everybody knows that, you know, the fire chief is retiring, and so there's gonna be a new fire chief hired. That is uh done and handled by the Civil Service Board. So just wanna let everybody know that's not done by the council or by the mayor, that's performed, that uh the hiring of the police and fire chief is done by the uh Civil Service Board, so just wanted to let everybody know that that may not know.
And we're we're the last city in the state that does it that way.
We're the last one?
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Madam President, can I make one little correction? Just one. Uh when you're on top of a burning building, there's no such thing as a fireperson. You become a firefighter, and when you're on the ground, you got the same thing going, so I think it's firefighter all the way.
There, there you go.
Personal opinion, of course. Thank you.
Won't argue with you guys at all. Councilman uh, Councilman Wilson, I might argue with Councilman Wilson, but I won't argue with you guys.
Well, I'm gonna disagree with all of y'all, surprise, surprise. Um I think in this time of of hypersensitivity and and all these emotions at play, that we should we should de-escalate, and so I'm gonna call them fire de-escalators. That's all I have.
What does that mean, Jason?
Councilman Cannon.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd just like to say I'm excited for uh February the first to get here, our new grocery store in Alabama City, Fresh Value will be opening up. Hope everybody around town to go visit them, see what they got, I think you'll be impressed, the store's really clean and they've worked really hard to get this thing open way, way, way ahead of time, in my opinion, and I think they're wanting to people's business, and I think you're gonna uh see a good little store for us there in Alabama City. Also, wanna thank all the people that's retiring, everybody knows I'm getting old, and I probably shouldn't say this, try to do all the names, but I'm gonna give it a shot. First, we got Jerry Gladden in the personnel office, he's been there I don't know how many years, but he's an asset to our uh he's been the personnel man, he's been there, Jerry's did a great job, and I say I appreciate everything he's done. We've got Cookie at the Falls that's retiring, and I appreciate all the light work she did up there and what she did for uh Christmas at the Falls, it was always beautiful up there. Then we have a Charlotte Wright that works in the uh uh senior activities building down here, she's a go-getter, she's always, always did her job perfectly, and she was at Walnut Park for a while, Community Center, and I appreciate her time she spent over there. Uh we've got Jerry, we got, I'm sorry, we got Jimmy Kuro, our electrical inspector, he does a really, really super job. Uh he's been there a long time also. Uh it's just, he just decided it was time to retire, and I appreciate everything he's done for this city and how he's always treated everybody the same on his electrical permits and stuff, and I just, it's just glad to know all these people I've talked about, and also Fred Winston, he works for Public Works, and he's been out there pouring uh cement, and he's drove loader trucks, and he's did about everything you could imagine in Public Works, and I wanna give him a shout out there for his dedication to the city. Uh I did all this by memory, and if I forgot anybody, if you'll let.
Brent Brewer.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I I did leave one out, Brent Brewer, our plumbing inspector, he's been there a little bit longer than Jimmy, and he's always did his job. Him and Jimmy will be missed in the building department, there were two assets to that apartment down there. They both knew their jobs and they was well-trained in everything they did, and they tried to go by the book and treat everybody fairly. And uh if I've missed anybody, if Mr. Ozil will give me a list next week, I'd be glad to wish y'all farewell, I'm sorry if I did, I try to go all by memory, and sometimes it's, it's kinda hard to go by memory. Uh Kay, Kay Adams is also in court, don't forget about her, I'm sorry Kay, I forgot about you here today, uh in the court department, I'm sorry. In the court department, I'm sorry. Like I said, I'm getting older and I, I just kind of forget names sometimes, but I know everybody's face, but we do appreciate everything she's done in our court system. Uh, we're going to have a bunch of jobs opening. So if you're, think you're qualified for these jobs, I wish you'd try to apply for them. Next, Miss President, uh, Councilwoman Toles, if I may. We had some stimulus money left and we was going to try to spend it and Nick Howe and his department has came up with a way to give some stuff to some people. If I could get Nick to come on just for a minute and tell you when he's going to give that out. It's going to be, uh, a mask and some sanitizer and stuff to tell where he's going to give it out. It might help everybody where I could get ready, if I may, please.
I had asked, um, earlier, before we came on, um, if he wanted to do that on the board report. And I understand he wants to do a pre- a press release, so I, I don't know if he's available to do that or if you can wait until the press release comes out, but, uh, if he's on.
Hey, Dr. Toles, uh, we were waiting on the final mask to come in and it's just come in today. But it's our plans to have these on Friday from one to four. These are one thousand kits that we're putting together that includes some, uh, disinfectant spray, some disposable masks, some lice oil wipes and some, uh, Purell hand sanitizer. Our goal is to use this, uh, Community Development Block grant COVID funds for the seniors and low income. So we'll be providing these kits or, uh, bags to those on Friday. And right now, we're planning to have them at the venue from one to four and, uh, the Alabama City Center from one to four. And in addition, we're going to send some of the kits over to Elliot for those that can't make the Alabama Center that, that have a meal there on Saturday. We just found this out. Uh, maybe better suited to, to, for them to get some there. But, uh, we're, we had some of this, uh, federal funds from community, the, community development. And as our goal is to get some of these, uh, PPE items to the public so that they can, uh, still fight this COVID-nineteen.
Hey, Nick, if I can make a suggestion, you know, they feed the homeless there at Elliot around lunchtime on Sundays. If you can get some to, uh, and I can't even think of the lady's name right now that does that. Uh, the cow, lady that don't love, kick the love cow company. I, I took us some masks about a month and a half, two months ago. So if you could, uh, get some of those kits over there because they, I think they line up around eleven-thirty or twelve.
Okay, we are going to send some over there to Elliot. Uh, do they serve on Saturday and Sunday?
I don't know about Saturday. I just see them out there on Sunday. When I took the stuff over there, it was on a Sunday.
Okay, well, we're sending them over there. And as I understand, it's about a hundred and sixty that they serve, so we're going to send some kits over there to them to distribute.
Thank you so much.
And we'll have a press release forthcoming. We're just confirming we had the mask in today, so.
Is that all, Councilman Cannon?
Yes, ma'am. I should appreciate you giving me my time today.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, today, we want to remember Janie Terrell. She passed away last Thursday. Uh, Janie gave to this city and this county so many ways, so many times. It's unreal. You couldn't, you couldn't even start to tell about it today. But, uh, the main thing with me and Janie are, are the patriots. Uh, Janie was a big helper to us. She backed us in every way possible. Especially when, uh, Clark Candy and, and Rick started the, uh, golf tournament for the veterans. She was a big, big part. And then in two thousand and three, she was listed as our Patriot Hall of Honor winner that day, which was culminated everything that she's done for service people and for the community. Because that's how you qualify for that honor. Anyway, today, I just want to remember Janie and give her family our best wishes.
Next week, Fri- uh, February the second, the council will meet in person in the council chamber. The work session will be held at ten AM and the council will meet at eleven AM. And remember, we're still following the, uh, safe-at-home guidelines and we're also, uh, following the social distancing, uh, in our chambers. So this will just be for February the second, uh, regular council meeting in person. If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you.
Okay, we adjourn for today.